Okay, all right. I call the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board for May 16, 2023 to order. The first item on the agenda is continued business. Forty-one Livingston Street, proposed installation of two EV home charging stations.
Actually, hold on, Chair. We gotta do, we gotta do the vote.
Oh, the vote, yes. Before we start that, we need to vote to pick a new chairman for the 2023. Would somebody like to nominate someone?
I nominate David Mill.
My second nomination.
Oh, that was a tie.
I third it.
Okay, can I vote for myself?
Yes.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. That's done. Now I can officially open the meeting. So I was the other time with the charging stations. So I don't know what discussion was held regarding the one that's not in the garage and the one that's in the driveway. You guys come to an agreement or you?
Do you want to?
Yep.
You want me up there?
Yeah, I want to come up where we can see you.
Thanks for having me again. And my wife will probably join. She's finishing up a board call on something else. But she may wander in at some point. So our understanding of where we left off was that we were going to do our best to place the front charger as inconspicuously as possible, as far off the driveway as possible. And that was the primary goal. We did some measurements. I think I gave Ryan a few additional pictures. We took, we don't have professional surveying equipment, so you know, we hopefully accept the quality of the pictures accordingly. And use my wife as my assistant to take some of these pictures to try and show what the options are. Upon doing some further research, some of the things that we understood to be the case is that, you know, the longest cable that's available basically for any of these for electrical safety purposes, I think we mentioned last time, is basically 25 feet. All right, so you get the charger. We would have it, we would have the charger itself connected via underground conduit that would be connected to one of these charge units. We are considering a second one, which I also provided some pictures of. I see one in town just around the corner from us that's already in place. And then from that charge unit, that box, you have 25 feet available to get to the car. The car we're looking at, basically according to people I was able to discuss with online, there's about five to six feet of slack that you need from the front of the driveway to where the actual charging port is. Furthermore, because of the thickness of the gauge of cable, you do not want that cable to be suspended in the air between the charging station and the car, as ultimately that puts a lot of pressure on the connection points because there's a lot of weight in those cables. So doing all that math and looking at the picture, looking at what we could do, our sense is the best we can do is that that charging unit can be located no more than 12 feet from the front of the driveway. That would be behind the plane of the front of the house, but not by a great amount. But it would also be behind a fair number of trees and landscaping in front of the driveway. So hopefully is relatively inconspicuous from the point of view of any passersby, particularly when it's not in use. One of the alternatives that we were thinking about, but it would not be behind the plane of the house, is to mount it off to the side, which would be concealed by some trees. We have a fence that extends, not all the way up to the driveway, but pretty close to it. We shared some pictures last time and they're, and I think also in the current batch of stuff I sent around. That actually would have greater future flexibility, in part just because it would leave more length available to plug in a car. And because we don't know what cars will have for what period of time, even though the current one they had is, you know, 14 years old, we may need a different car at a different point sooner than that. And so I'm cautious about creating a long-term solution for a singular vehicle need. But you know, it's better than nothing. But on the side will provide probably more flexibility. It'd also provide more flexibility for us to back the vehicle into the driveway, which having just been hit by a car myself this past weekend, I'm on my bike. You know, we do prefer backing the car in. It's just better for egress, you know, coming out, particularly in the weekends when there are lots of people and there's a fair amount of shrubbery around and everything like that.
I saw a startup company on CNBC the other last week, and they're doing wireless charging. They're gonna make a thing that's like 18 by 18, a pad, and you plug it into the Level 2 charger. And then you had a little like iPhone display on your screen, and you back, back, back. There's a camera under the kind of goes beep, you hit the spot, and then you get out and you charge it wirelessly. And they've also showed them encased in concrete, so they can be buried at gas stations. And you can just leave your car. There are no wires.
Yeah, yeah. The Tesla had, at some point Elon Musk could have talked about solutions like that.
So he's deep down, he's got prototypes, he's selling them to throughway truck stops and things like that, so.
Stuff a cat runs under the car with and gets zapped?
No, it's wireless charging. It's transmitting. Yeah, I don't know. No, they have cafes where you can put your phone down on the table and it charges. So it's the same, it's not contact charging.
I think Kevin Bean couldn't get between that charger and the phone.
Well, the charger should be on top of, it's not electricity. I don't know. I'm sure he's thought of that.
There is also, as a aside, I mean, people have talked about in the home, there's someone who's patented the idea of, you know, like you have Wi-Fi service, you can get.
Electricity out of Wi-Fi, that guy's gonna be a billionaire.
Absolutely.
Someone's gonna patent that.
Right, you walk into your home and your phone is charging.
There's a Wi-Fi signal in here. We should be able to, you know, without telling us, transmit electricity into the phone. I'm skeptical.
Over what generations will they test that on all of us?
So this is one of the, this was the original charger we talked about.
Standard Level 2 charger.
Yeah, and we're selecting between two because a key feature, which I think is never mentioned on here, which is load management. So you, because, since I was here, my daughter turned 16. I just was at the DMV in Kingston with her today, getting her permit. So at some point she'll probably need a car. We're gonna get, at that point we can get a small electric car, which is the reason for the two chargers. And what these do, these two options, is they load manage so that you don't overload your domestic electrical system. And so charge is one, and when the one is at a decent, you know, is down to trickle charging, it'll put more power to the other. So I don't know if you, you may have pictures of the other alternative from what I submitted to Ryan the other day. But the other one is a small box called a, yeah, that's the original. The other one is called, I gave the pictures. I can go over a second.
Juice Box?
This is the Juice Box, and the other one is Wall Box. An American company who makes that one.
Well, the most important thing does is not in the front of the building. That was what we cared about. At least on the side, it's out of the way.
It's in front of the driveway. And again, we're trying to think about what creates the least visual disruption while maximizing the ability to put it to good use.
Well, people have hoses curled up on the same thing hanging on the side of buildings, so. I guess.
Yeah, I think the concern is here is this is gonna happen all over the place.
And we have to establish something.
Yeah, and we don't want to have precedent, which we allow front yard versions on the first time it comes to us. And then everybody says, well, that's the standard. We have these things hanging out in the front yard on a post. So I think, at least my perspective is it should be behind the front plane of the house. As far back on the front plane of that, from the front plane of the house is conceivable. And in this case, they have a front yard driveway, which is not typical of the village. In fact, it's not allowed in the code. Now, we can't ask them to move the driveway maybe, but we, you know, one viable alternative is to extend the driveway if the charger has to be so many distance and it can't get behind the front of the plane of the house. So that's my, my position is that it should be behind the front plane of the house. It shouldn't be just hung on the front corner. It should be somewhere where it's actually concealable.
Backing in is a good idea because, you know, exiting a certain street, but also the chargers seem to be where the gas tanks are. You know, so backing in, the charger's in the back of the car.
Not, not in the car. We're looking at, a lot of cars, it's all over.
Oh, it's all over.
They're all over. And that's where, you know, you've got, if we design it specifically for this car, so this car has it toward the front. It's in front of the front driver door. All right, so it'll come, and the only way, if it's behind the plane of the house, the only way we would be able to park and charge is pulling it in front of us. Which we'll do, right? And we don't have to, you don't have to charge every single way. And Ryan, are the other pictures available, uploaded or not?
I can't remember if I, I thought I scanned them in that original PDF.
These here?
That had your site plan, yes. Yeah, they're in there.
A site plan application.
So with the, because I did have some pictures with.
Always one of them.
Oh, yeah, okay. So if you.
Scroll that.
Yeah, but this is, so that's.
Also the.
There you go. So if we were to do it in the front plane of the house, behind the front plane of the house, this is about where it would be. That's 12 feet back from the driveway. And there's, I think, a side view, if you maybe look at the next picture, right? So that's sort of where it would be relative to our house. And then if you go to the next one. So then this is what, you know, we have all this brush, and I have this. So I have other pictures that show this. But we have all this brush on the side of the driveway, all this landscaping. So here you're standing at the front right corner of the driveway where it's written Option 2, and facing toward the neighboring house. And this would not be behind the plane of the house. This would be in front of, but it would be behind trees. It would be more coiling. I don't think it would be visible from the street because it would be behind a lot of landscaping and toward that fence extension we have. That fence is our property, not the neighbor's. The neighbor would be fine with us, you know, mounting it over there. But, you know, he obviously doesn't have a vote in this. But that would provide more flexibility and presumably would allow just any vehicle to park frontways or backways. But the prior to pit, prior to pictures are the one that we would do if you need us to do it behind the plane of the house.
It's barely behind the front plane of the house.
Say again?
The location he's showing is barely behind the front plane. It's just behind the front plane of the porch.
If we go up here, is this the front plane of the house here?
Well, I understood it to be the porch because our, that's our structure.
Oh, you were thinking the porch posts were the front plane of the house?
Yeah.
I think.
No, it's going behind the house.
Yeah.
It won't, it behind, it just won't, we won't get reach in that case.
Okay, the, if I can just go back to these for a second here. Now that one. Okay, so what this one is telling us is that the Juice Box cable is 25 feet long.
Correct.
And if you can explain again, the calculations you put.
Yeah.
Go back up here.
Yeah.
And spin it around. So. What is this? Cannot be further than 12 feet.
Yeah.
We go to the, because, first of all, just to echo what John said, we spent a good bit of time thinking about this in the last meeting because it was the first time it came to us. And we want to encourage.
And I'm trying to do it.
Electric car charging.
And.
But we want to, you know, establish a precedent, just like we've had to do for HVAC exterior thing, because they're visible from the street. This, obviously a charger hookup would be less visible. But as establishing a precedent, the idea we came up with and suggested was that it would be behind as far back from the front plane of the house as possible. Many houses could put it 20 feet back. Yours, I think, not.
Yeah.
But the idea was if you can put it just back from the front, we would have established the precedent that says it must be back from the front and at least a car length, unless you had a special circumstance like you do, maybe no one else does. But are you saying from these calculations that a 25-foot cable, if it was at the front plane of the house, wouldn't reach the charging port?
It wouldn't because it's, again, I, so I asked, I was on some forum for people who have this vehicle. And, and someone actually measured from the bumper to where the charge port is, just like from the front corner to the charge port of this car, and it was like six feet. So when you think about that, that, we're not parking all the way at the, I mean, we'll pull in as far as we possibly can. But, you know, generally speaking, you're not butting up against the trees. I don't want to do that. Or get into the bushes and scratch the car or anything like that. So, and because of the orientation we're talking about here, it would be coming down the middle of the driveway. You would need to be able to have some slack to get it around to the side of the car, recognizing from the front left corner of the car to the charge port already is close to six feet. So that's where we were saying, we thought from the front center of the driveway to the charging area is going to be about eight to 10 feet of length that's required for that. If you take the eight to 10 feet and you add the 12, I recognize we're not at 25, but like I said upon further research, I've consistently heard you do not want to have these cables suspended in the air. Right? And they're, and you're not doing this for five minutes. You're doing it overnight for a good number of hours.
Cars can be 15, 20 feet long, so you, you know.
Right. So again, you know, what we don't want to do is go through all of this only to have something that functionally is risky to use or ultimately is, you know, not gonna be, is gonna be a difficult thing that won't have the utility. I mean, I'm paying a fair amount.
We just have to establish behind the front plane of the house. That's what we're looking to establish as far, as far back as is feasible.
Yeah, there's a definition of front plane in our code.
It's not the porch. It's the house.
Yeah, it's the house. Well, it's the facade of the building. Here's the front property line excluding porches, decks, or patios. And there's multiple places in our code in which we prevent things being, being in front of the front plane of the house. You're not allowed to have accessory buildings in front of the front plane of the house, you know, accessory structures even.
Garage.
Yeah, things like that. She adds whatever. There's, you're not allowed to have yard storage in front. You know, if you have a vehicle or a boat or whatever, you're not allowed to have that. Parking's not allowed in front of the front plane of the house.
And fences can be four feet high until you hit the front plane of the house, then it can go to six. So the front plane of the house is defined in many places in the code. That's what we're just trying to establish. So no one wants to put a charging, a giant parking meter on the front porch with a cable hooked around it to plug in your car. We just want to, you know.
Yeah.
Because, because, you know, we're losing control of the 60 or so split units that we already have in the village that, you know, are beginning to make the village look unsightly.
Yeah. Well, look, I appreciate the tension associated with this. I mean, we feel pretty strongly that it's a wise decision to start our transition to our non-fossil fuel vehicles. As we talked about last time, it's funny, I was just talking with someone about this today, who is involved in, about this transition, involved directly. We're not prepared to go with only an electric for singular vehicle, but we're excited about this vehicle offering 40 miles of range, which will cover 99% of our daily needs, taking kids to school, et cetera. And so I appreciate that tension. I know the, this code probably didn't contemplate the existence of these alternatives. I don't think, can we look at the other picture if we scroll down in this, the other unit? Keep going down. There's, all right, so this is the other option. This is the, and you can, there's an actual picture of one too. You can see that it's eight by eight inches, basically.
I think I. Oh, you mean a different, a different picture?
Yeah, I thought, I think I had, yeah, it's, it's a different company. It's a smaller, it's a smaller charger itself.
We only gave you this, Jeff.
I thought I mailed a picture that came.
So are we happy with the, the location that's been suggested? It's Option 1, Option 2?
I, I still would prefer it behind the front plane of a house, which would mean extending your driveway so that you can park the car closer to the house.
I will tell you, they'll never fly with my wife and she, so if that's the only option, then I think we'll just say the board didn't allow us to do this. So I mean, that's, I won't do that, right? Because my wife won't let me do it. So that ultimately means it makes it impossible because I won't be able to get the reach. So I mean, if that is the choice.
Why is it impossible? It's just landscaping in front. You can move the landscaping or turn it back. We're only talking about four or five feet.
I know, but my, my wife loves having this landscaping and ultimately, I think from, I mean, my personal view aesthetically, having more of the landscaping there when we're not there is more appealing than four or five more feet of driveway. But that's, I just know she's not here right now, but I suspect that that will be, I will, I will lose on that battle. And I actually think she's probably right. If you're worried about the aesthetics of it, four or five feet less of, of concrete versus having, you can see, right, the front of the driveway, the, you know, what we have there, when people walk by, they, they get to see that. And my wife normally standing there with, is, you know.
Well, then the other option is to put both units in the back, where you have also driveway access.
Yep. No, I understand that. So I, I'm hoping that the reality that this is an evolving trend in need and, you know, we park 99% of the time in front because that is, in bad weather days, the way to go to school and other things like that, that it would be, you know, that this wouldn't be offensive to people if, and I want to find the other picture.
So they don't have a garage?
We do have a garage.
You do?
We enter around, it's a separated garage on, off of Mulberry Street, that the garage itself is, we have a driveway off of Mulberry.
Right, that's the house, yes, yes.
And it's the driveway.
And it's.
So we got the figures.
Yeah, they have a garage, but David, when we met last time, I guess the issue was it's a very tight 90-degree turn to get into the garage from the alleyway.
It is.
And one option that was suggested was clear a space next to that. So there could be side-by-side parking. They could get in the back, side-by-side cars. Which didn't seem to fly.
Yeah.
Or, or have one car in the garage and one car outside the garage. You can charge them both.
Yeah.
Right. And look, again, I'm trying to, in my ideal world, right, you know, we would have it off to the side. And if, most people would never see it, and it would provide maximum flexibility for us to have any vehicle there over the future that would be able to charge, hold in backwards. And that, to me, has the greatest logical appeal associated with it, with the least aesthetic negativity. I know that that's, doesn't fit the code, so I get why that's a problem. I'm trying to find the picture.
What about asking for an area variance because of your unique part of this property?
I don't, you know, there's no specific thing in the code that says you have to have a charging station.
It's not there.
Five feet from X point.
I'm thinking behind the front plane of the house because he thought by showing his picture, the front plane was the porch.
Right.
And I would have too, because it's original, it's when the house was constructed, and it is got a roof. But the code reads, it's the facade.
But we're talking, you know, like four feet to get it behind.
25 feet is a short cable.
Yeah.
Well, because as I said, a car could be 15, 20 feet long in itself. And 25 feet is a very short cable. They assume you're in the garage.
This is the, this is the other, to the extent this is helpful, this is the other alternative. This, one that we have the schematic on, the sort of seven by seven inch version.
But still it's a 25-foot cable.
Still it's a 25-foot cable, same, same limitations. There are none. I think that's a.
Because if you're in the garage, a 25 feet's plenty.
Right, and we would not, you know, back in, however difficult it is to get into that garage, that's the.
And it'll make anything with a longer cord.
I think electrically, just what you're talking about, charge-wise, by my understanding.
You get to lose, distance loses.
It's not, it's not only distance, but just at some point, you're talking about amperage that you don't want over a greater distance. Like you do not want to rely on, they make extension cables, but everything I understand is that.
That's not a good idea.
That's not a good idea. Right.
And it's heavy cable, because it's 50 amp cable.
Yes.
So it's a heavy piece of cable.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
So actually, if you look in the definition of structure, it includes a gasoline pump.
I do not want to put a gasoline pump in, but that's.
Well, it's the equivalent. It's the modern version of a gasoline pump. So.
We have to make a decision. This is the, our first customer in this category. We don't establish a bad precedent.
And I do want to know, sorry, before that, that, you know, I've seen a lot of charging stations around. And it is important for us to try and do things the right way, spending the right money. It will cost at least $500 extra to have filed for all of this, to get an inspection afterwards, time and effort. Like, we want to do it right. Right? So I hope that's recognized, that we're trying to work within the, you know, the bounds of the preferences of the village. And then we did just, you know, just do it and ask for forgiveness later, right? Because.
No, we appreciate that. So, gentlemen, we need to make a decision.
I see two alternatives. One alternative is, we, we said at the last meeting that we wanted to establish a precedent. And we said, in fact, I think we said maybe 20 feet behind the.
That would be ideal.
Beside of the house, if possible, but under, under extremely extenuating circumstances, could make an exception to that, but they would have to be proven as.
It'd have to be a driveway going back. Then it'd be like the garage. You could pull right up to the charging station.
There are very few houses I can think of in the village where the driveway doesn't actually go to the side of the house.
Or that doesn't have a garage back until.
Right. Can you think of any cases?
Tim Decker's house right next door.
Yeah.
Or Tim Decker's house.
Yeah, the house right next to the bus.
Does, so does his driveway go beyond the front?
No, no, it stops just like this.
I think it's even shorter than ours, but it has two cars.
It also has a chimney on the front porch, which is interesting.
What does that do?
Anyway, the point being is, yes, this is unusual, but it's not, it's not insurmountable. There's two ways he can do it and be compliant with the code, as I see it. And that's is to have the chargers in, back by the garage and work it out in terms of the driveway and the access. Or put it behind the front plane of the house. And it can be at the front corner, but it has to be behind the front plane of the house. That's how I read. It's a guy that's as close as we can get in the code.
Yeah, yeah. Just one more question. You're so, you're so close to satisfying the need we see. Is there such a thing as a charging station with a 30-foot cable?
No, I've not. Everything I've looked at, unfortunately, and I would sacrifice the load sharing and manage that myself. But everything is, you know, between 23 and 25 feet because of the electrical load. Look, that would be, that'd be great. All right.
Those plants can be moved.
Say again, John?
I said the plants can be moved and driveway extended. That's a simple solution.
Solution A, extend the driveway, move the plant. Solution B, put both chargers, one inside the garage, one outside the garage.
Yeah.
Maybe less convenient, but it would satisfy simultaneously charging two cars.
But it sounded like solution A wasn't agreeable via his wife.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, but that's.
Technically.
He can consult with his wife and decide, but.
I mean, if that's what you guys vote on, I mean, technically, you can just withdraw your application right now and say, have, have a good night and just go with the one charging station and then wait. And if technology advances, come back to us in a year or two.
Yeah, you know, that comes at considerable expense in having an electrician do this twice and other factors like that. I mean, to me, option three is to say this is a, a new and, uh, evolving need that's going to become more and more commonplace. Putting a gas pump in the front is never, you have no houses that have ever sought, well, I don't know, but I assume have never sought to do that because there is no such need in the home to have your own gas available because that's not the way internal combustion refilling works and we've all relied on filling stations for years and years. Clearly, this is how a vast majority of people with electric and plug-in hybrids operate is they do do it at home. So, it is a new and developing need that strikes me that if the village, it, my view is to find a way to say, do the best you possibly can, conceal it to the best of your ability, that existing policies were written at a time that didn't necessarily contemplate what is happening now, which is largely a benefit for society and for the environment. So, I, I would think you would, option three would be some level of evolution of the rules with discretion for you all to say no to somebody who ultimately egregiously wants to just plop it in on their front lawn and do things that give no consideration to aesthetics and, but.
Could we say it's on a case-by-case basis so we're not establishing a precedent? We have a reason.
And we're just making stuff up. We can't make it stuff up. We have to go by the code. And the code says accessory structures should be afforded the front plane of the house. And this is similar to an accessory structure.
Yeah, we are.
As defined in the code.
We're constantly under pressure by people that want to, uh, do things on their part. There's a lot of small parcels and people want to do a lot of things on smaller parcels and push the boundaries, frequently asking us to, uh, make variances, et cetera. We had, uh, speaking of the wives, we had a case with a fence recently where the wife would not possibly agree to do a fence a certain way, even though it violated the code. And we said, well, anyone else can do it that way, just because you think you want to do it. And, uh, as it turned out, he went to the ZBA and the ZBA denied, denied it.
So, they had to move, change the fence.
Yeah, yeah, they had already installed it, so.
All right, and I appreciate examples like that. And I know you all are under pressure all the time associated with these things where you do really have other options. And I know my other option you're laying out is to just do it in the back and that, that is a considerable reduction in the utility of our vehicle and using it to, to get around. It is not insurmountable, I recognize that, but I'm, I was hoping to find a solution that ultimately functionally allows for us to use the front driveway to maintain the appeal both for ourselves. And I'm not going to speak for my wife, to your point, Ryan, in terms of withdrawing it. I suspect it would be, uh, not favorably viewed. But I also just think it's actually a step backwards for the, the aesthetics of people walking by on any given weekend to have four or five fewer feet of trees that we invest behind and people enjoy. So, to me, a fence is a different circumstance than a changing technology that's designed to help, you know, evolve the, the environmental friendliness of how we get around. I recognize you've got rules you have to abide by. I don't know how those rules change over time or ultimately what their process is like.
Right now, the comp plan, essentially to relieve this pressure on this board of this situation would be a minor factor within the comp plan committee, reviewing the zoning and reconsidering the zone. That's kind of the only direction to relieve pressure off of this board with this type of situation when dealing with not only the front plane of the house, but also the front plane of a house in the historic district.
Yeah, so, I, I, I appreciate an applaud. Um, environmentally conscious thing. In our house, we have geothermal heating and cooling. We have 90 solar panels and a solar panel farm. We have a hybrid car, we, uh, plug-in hybrid. We have electric lawn, we have all of this stuff. But I think what I'm hearing it boils down to are there are three options. Two of them are for you to consider, which would be to move some of the shrubbery and push the driveway back, option number one. Option number two, do your charging in the back for both of them. Option number three would be for the board to make a specific exception here, which I don't see we're moving in a direction of.
I don't want to make exceptions. We, we don't have the power, to tell you the truth. I know it's not explicit. They don't talk about charging stations in our code. But they say accessory structures and they define structures as anything planted on the ground and is higher than a patio or a parking lot.
Right.
So, this falls under definition reduction, says no structures in front of the plane of the house. It's in the historic district. It's the first time we have a chance to do it. I think we should do it right. And I don't, I don't particularly see why it's such a hardship to walk to the back of the house, get in your car.
I'm, I'm not claiming, I'm not claiming it is, but other than it is a significant reduction in convenience, as I put it, right, it's not a hardship. Look, we live in our houses to get the most out of them and enjoy them to the best of our ability. Right, so it would diminish our ability to enjoy in inclement weather, get into that vehicle in a way that isn't going to, you know, be unpleasant at that point in time. Is that a first-world problem? Absolutely, right? In my view, this is the future and finding a way to address it, notwithstanding what's in the code, is, and I'm not suggesting you don't have to abide by the code. I get that. But this is where the world is headed and, uh, people will want to find, want convenience to be part of their decision to move to vehicles and solutions that ultimately are environmentally friendly, right? Part of the reason why it's been difficult to affect the transition of electric vehi, you know, to electric vehicles outside of Tesla is because the infrastructure is poor. And because people are afraid, we have friends who live over on the next street over who just got rid of their, uh, their electric vehicle because the logistics of charging it and dealing with it were too difficult. And so, but I, I, you know, will, will, I've made my appeal and, uh, you know, you, you all will decide. And then I suppose if the decision is to take out greenery and extend the driveway, if that's available to us, which is a bit counterintuitive to me, I'll run it past my wife, but I think I know where that is headed. And then I think, you know, if we're talking about it in the back only, I'll just have to make a decision as to whether or not, you know.
How wide is the driveway?
I think one of, I can't remember, did one of the, um, drawings, I might, I might.
That was a drawing from last time, Jeff.
But I, I probably can tell you here, I can find in my notes, measurements.
One car, I think it's 12 feet probably.
Well, the parking space is nine by 18.
Driver width is 10.6 feet.
Okay. I was thinking the picture looked bigger. Maybe you could move the plants a little bit and put a walkway and then have it.
Wasn't, wasn't the April 4th meeting?
But the driver's only 10, and it's, it's, so.
Oh.
I'm leaning now because of precedent. I mean, you've made a compelling argument and if I was dictator on this board, I would let you have it, but because we have to follow the law, I'm going to go with John suggesting that, you know, move the shrubbery and extend the driveway four feet or so to get that space.
Okay.
That's, I have no problems with option one or two, but that's just one. The law doesn't allow us the way it's written, because.
And how does it work, just from my own knowledge, for changes as these things, like into the law, as these things evolve?
Well, we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan. After that, we, the town, the village board adopts that, there'll be changes in the zoning law consistent with the recommendations.
I see.
And there might be, um, changes in terms of election talk that may be mentioned in the comprehensive plan. We haven't talked about it. We're over a year into the process yet.
Yeah.
But we have talked about solar panels and other sorts of things. So, um, it may take another six months to a year, is my guess, to even think about zoning. And, um, and my guess is, because of the historic district and the precedence, is that they would say any charging stations have to be behind the front plane of the house. I don't see why they would allow them at the front yard.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, you know, somewhere between allowing it unfettered in the front yard, which obviously is, you know, aesthetically unappealing, I get that, and then find, doing your best to conceal it in a way that provides flexibility, usability, but also doesn't, doesn't draw the attention of, you know, of, of people, of passersby. Because that, that to me bears the most logic in what the solution is, but I understand that the law doesn't afford that sort of outcome. Yeah. So, um, I know you're about the business.
Wait a minute, Jeff.
Sorry.
What was the motion?
Uh, well, he does, we don't have to vote on it tonight if he wants to reconsider or we can vote on it and, and then he would have to reapply.
What am I reconsidering?
The three options.
So, my, so I see, so I, I can't get approved for all three of the options?
Well, if you want us to vote, we'll vote that you're option one, which is, I think, the closest they could, but I don't see a groundswell of support myself. But, and I, I will vote no against what I consider, um, not consistent with the code.
I guess my question is, is it, am I able to walk away from here saying, go, go back home and tell my wife, here's what I'm approved for? Or it doesn't work like that?
Well, we could, we could approve the one in the rear.
In the garage, yeah.
Well, actually, well.
In the driveway portion of the garage, outside of the garage, we could approve one on a post outside. In the rear, we wouldn't have a problem if you put two, one on a post 20 feet back from the garage and one inside the garage, and then you could tandem park, charge both cars at once, and that wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
We can vote tonight on that.
Um, also, you, you laid out another option, which I don't think is going to, uh, work for us about the extension of the driveway, but is that officially offered as a?
Well, I think if, if, if the structure is beyond the front plate of the facade, meaning, um, you know, a foot back from there, a half a foot back from the front plate of the facade, it's, we could approve it.
Yes. Another way of thinking this is that we could, we could have a motion that says, uh, an external charger would be allowable if it is placed behind the front plane of the house. And that would allow you to move some of your shrubbery, extend your driveway and still charge in the front of the house. It would also cover that you can put an external charger back by your garage, which is beyond the front plane of the house.
Yeah. And the only thing, I think we'd have, it'd have to be five feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Five feet from the, the property line to our east.
Yes.
Yeah. Cause that, is that a policy too?
Yeah, that's, any accessory structure has to be.
So, this is your garage here.
Yeah.
Right, and this is the property line. So, you're going to have one inside your garage, which is fine. We don't have to approve that. Um, you could have one outside your garage to allow you to bring a car right up to here with a charger here, right? Which would be more than five feet from any property line. And it would be behind, well, behind the front plane of the house. Or you could have one just behind the front plate of the house, extend your driveway and maybe reconfigure your landscaping.
Right, I was asking because I was thinking the most aesthetically appealing line in front is actually off to the side near that fence that runs between our neighbor's property where it's really behind a lot of shrubbery, but that would violate the five, the five-foot rule also, so.
You mean to say, you would be suggesting to put it within five feet of this neighbor?
Yeah, that's what, that was option two that I had laid out in the picture because there's a, there's some dense shrubbery there, but it would not be behind the plane of the house.
Well, right, but this, although it's kind of shaded, this is your fence, right?
Uh, no, our fence is further back, but there is an extension that existed that runs, that's, um.
Yeah, well, one of these pictures has.
I mean, you can see it here, the fence, it extends somewhere up along here, so.
So, where are we? Do you want to, we have to declare lead agency and a neg deck? If we want a decision, then we have to approve something. As Ryan said, it does, I.
He did the short EAF.
Yeah.
Within the historic district, so you guys have always done a neg deck.
Yeah.
For in from the historic district.
And we, we would approve either of two options.
Or you can approve one motion with two options.
Yeah.
So, if you want us to approve those two locations, behind the front plane of the house in the front and, or, uh, back by the garage, more than five feet from the property line, we could do that tonight.
I mean, I, I don't see why I wouldn't ask you to do that because I'm not, I don't think I'm going to sway you otherwise, right? So.
All right, so.
It doesn't mean I have to execute either of those options.
Absolutely.
So, could I have a motion to declare lead agency? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ours in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a motion to declare a neg deck.
Motion.
Second.
Ours in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the site plan? And we, we're approving either, um, on beyond the front plane of the house in the front, which would require you to move the driver back a little bit, or in the garage, next to the garage in the back.
In the garage or next to the garage?
Yeah, but we, in the garage and next to the garage.
Or, or next to it.
Right, there were two of them. Or next to the garage and the back.
And as long as the charging stations are more than five feet from the property line.
Yes.
To be clear, under all circumstances, I'm, I'm approved to have one in the garage, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Ours in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, well, uh, I don't know what we'll do with it, but.
You're going to be talking to me again, so just.
Yeah.
Go back home, talk, and then later this week, follow up with me and we can, you know.
I hope there's those, I appreciate the consideration, the open dialogue. I'm, I'm disappointed with the outcome, um, but I hope that as you go through some of the planning for amendments to changes, these things are, are common and, you know, so I think there's probably good solutions that just the code will need to reflect that'll allow for aesthetic appeal and flexibility. Those two things don't have to be mutually exclusive, so I'm, I'm hopeful that as time progresses, some of that will evolve in ways that provide more flexibility for people to do things that ultimately benefit our kids and. So, anyway, thank you for the consideration and, and Ryan, now we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, um, I am on the business 42 Mulberry Street. And, uh, we're going to go for a public hearing next month to get a certificate of demolition of a classified historic structure.
Seth, what document would you like to start with?
Um, it would be great if you could have, um, all three of those, right?
Okay. Got them all, got the architect set, the emergency plan set and the complete admission document.
Yeah, I will probably start with just the, uh, the emergency set. Um, and then you will also be referencing the documents because the documents, you have some images in the PDF set. And I just wanted to, uh, settle a few things. No, they, they will be out behind you, but maybe we'll go out and.
Okay, so, thank you.
There are rules and justifications for why it needs to be demolished in the code. There's only, uh, I want to only give a free demolition permit since the, uh, historic district was created. Well, according to the code, we have no control over what they build when we're talking about the demolition project.
Well, I, there's been an update from the village board and their intention is that they're going to have a public hearing here on it in.
Actually.
June.
Actually, June.
June, I think it's beginning of June. June 13th, I think, was the date, it stuck out in my mind, and they're going to approve an expansion of the historic district to include any building in that national registered boundary that's over 1940, that was built before 1945, 45 or earlier. So there'll be, in essence, two historic districts. One that is locally recognized and enforced by the code, um, that, by the, um, the portion of the code that's in the zoning law.
Existing.
That'll be up to 1945 buildings, and then there'll be, in the demolition law, it'll include the entire national registered district. So some of that stuff on Platte that's built after 45, there would be site plan approval over what gets built, but not demolition approval over what gets torn down.
Because there's a third part of the code that would change a couple of years ago, that we have the right, like the hole on Mulberry Street, we have the right to approve any structure that's built, like Jeff's house, in the historic district. So if they expand the bubble and make that part of the historic district, then the empty lot on Mulberry Street, um...
So the short of it is, right now, we have approval over demolition permit and not over site plan, but if and when they vote for it, which they anticipate to do in June, we will have site plan approval over anything before 45, and demo, and site plan approval over anything in the historic district, and demolition over anything 45 and older. So your house, the house of 42 Mulberry, will be, apply on both counts. It already applies to the demolition part of the portion of the law, and perhaps by the time we do anything, it'll approve to the site plan portion of the law, what gets built after the demolition. Right now, we only have control over demolition.
Understood. When we last came before this board, you know, for what was more of a discussion, you know, we definitely noticed that this was a crux and a, a place of great debate.
Thanks.
And definitely recognized that, and, you know, so we've come for the board, you know, to ask for the demolition permit, and based on our discussion, we've given a lot of consideration to what would be considered, you know, site plan approval aspects of that, and we would also let that present to you as well.
We could do that after we, uh, the public hearing and then the vote on the demolition permit. Now, there's specifics as to why this needs to be torn down in the code justification for financial hardship, you know, the whole list of things. Did they have that part, Brian?
Yeah, he submitted, I believe, some of that's covered in his cover letter. Um, which should also be, uh, the application itself that was filled out, and I believe his presentation covers, um, you know, how this involves chapter 64.
And I can certainly steer you in the direction of any of those things if you would like me to just do a quick presentation. That is, just on the next page.
Because that's what you'll have to present at the public hearing to the public. If neighbors come and they don't like the idea of tearing down an historic house, you know, you have to justify why it needs to, we've done three of them, we did, um, one house that lives this street, of course, Bill Clark owns that, he tried to save it as best he could, the foundation collapsed, and we had, the second one was the police station across the street, which was a, a good building, but they didn't, uh, it wouldn't be a police station. It's a three to two vote, very difficult decision to make, they voted to grant him to knock it down, and 37 South Street, uh, the church owned that house, and they left the windows open for 10 years, and then it's like, well, you know, it'd be great if you could save it, but the cost of saving it and trying to enhance it or expand it would be way beyond the cost of knocking it down, and that was, and that was again a three to two vote. So it's, it's tough, you know, we've only done three now in a decade, huh?
Three Rogers, too.
Uh, that was, that was a cheat, that was a, that wasn't a legitimate thing.
How we voted to, I think we did.
On our site visit, we voted to save it, but then we did a performance bond, and the landscape architect basically said, because there's nothing left, because they demolished it.
That's right.
Should let it...
So that was a, okay, three and a half houses we voted on to tear down. We were tricked into that one. So, um, this is rare.
Per section 64-4C, which is the portion that we need to be prepared to provide this information for, for the public hearing, we have actually detailed all of that in our cover letter, and I am certainly able to go over that with you as well. And we've also done an engineering evaluation of the existing home and looked at, you know, costs associated with any kind of redevelopment versus a, you know, what would be, you know, restoration, if you will, or something along those lines. So I'm prepared to talk about either of those.
Do you want to hear that now or wait for the public hearing?
Well, I wanted to, um, it seems to be the really pertinent section, that's 4C is where you have to provide certain information at the public hearing. The real crux of the issue is 64.54, 64-5B, where it says in order to approve an application, just to remove or demolition, plan boards, you'll find that one or more of the following criteria have been met. So, um, that's what I want to hear tonight, what, how are you satisfying one of those four criteria, because otherwise, we can't approve it.
Absolutely, yeah, that was, that certainly came out of our discussion previously, and we're also prepared to talk about that.
Good.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I could just kind of run through this as I had prepared it, or we can skip to the important items that the board would, you know, prefer, but I do cover all of those topics, so maybe it would be beneficial to, to kind of just run through the presentation. First of all, my name is Seth Stickle, I work with Mark Graminsky, PLSPC, here this evening to represent Rick and Donna Stickle, my parents, who are the applicants pursuing redevelopment of 42 Mulberry Street. It's a 0.5 acre lot located on the west side of Mulberry Street in the residential zoning district. Uh, this site is owned by the Stickle Family Trust, which is in care of Rick and Donna, and that is beneficiaries of their children, who are us. Rick and Donna were both raised in this village and in the community, you know, they went to Massachusetts to pursue their education as well as careers, and they returned about 15 years ago to, you know, start taking care of their aging parents, one of those who lived in this home. The existing home is 1.5 stories, three bedrooms, and the home is listed as constructed around 1940. It's about 1,400 square feet, and Jeff, I don't know if it's awful to go to the first plan on this, this sheet, this is the existing, you know, site plan. Uh, so this is what exists now, it's 1,400 square feet, 452 square feet, with, that includes the 96 square foot front porch and the 30 square foot covered back porch. There's a concrete walk that extends from, you know, Mulberry Street to the front porch, and then around the south side of the building to the rear. There is a one-car asphalt parking area located in the northeast corner of the lot, and in the rear of the, the site, there is a 80 square foot existing shed. For the most part, those are, you know, that's what you see when you come onto the site. You know, the, the home is provided with municipal water, obviously, from the village of Ryanbeck. You know, the home is actually still on an existing cesspool without a separate pan, and that's located in the rear yard. Ownership, the existing home was believed to be constructed in around 1940. In 1951, you know, Al and Jan Stickle, my father's parents, purchased this home. So for 72 years, 85% of this structure's owner and occupancy have been the Stickle family, and will continue to be. About a year ago, Rick and Donna started to consider options for relocating to this parcel, so they could return to the, to the village to age in place. One of the things we did is take a look at an engineering evaluation of the existing conditions of the property, and it indicated that major renovations would be required. These are included, but not limited to: replacement of all plumbing, you know, based on its quality and the type of installation, replacement of all electrical, replacement of spoiler and the hot water heaters, installation of building code compliant stairway to the upstairs. On the south side of the building, you can see there's an egress door that goes in, it immediately goes down to the basement, and then you go around the corner squeezed by a fridge and go up what were attic stairs to the second story. Uh, so, you know, that's a significant, you know, upgrade that would be necessary. The bedrooms upstairs are actually not code compliant, so there would need to be substantial renovations to the upstairs just to make it actually livable and code compliant. We'd also need to replace the windows, insulation, the, uh, excuse me, the siding, siding contains some asbestos, we'd like to obviously mitigate that. The interior structural modifications, just because we would probably look to improve the existing square footage, there might need to be modifications to the second story. In order to accommodate those modifications, you would need significant structural reconstruction of the interior of the home. And when, one of the things about the existing home is we're looking to improve accessibility, and in order to prove accessibility, you know, this is, this home was built with very small rooms, like, not very wide hallways, so any kind of handicap accessibility is difficult to accommodate. It would actually be redoing the entire interior structural walls to be able to do that. We would also, because of accessibility, want to do something similar to what's going on on Chestnut Street now, which is actually remove the entire foundation and lower the home. There's four to five steps that go up into the home on every point of ingress and egress, and, you know, for people who are looking to age in place, that's not necessarily the best method of ingress and egress, so that would certainly be something we would want to consider. So when we started to look at all of these things, it became clear that the cost of renovating the existing home would be equal to, if not greater than, you know, reconstruction, and that was just the, what had, you know, driven us to take a look at, you know, reconstruction. So in considering that, redevelopment became necessary, a necessary option to, to at least look into, to at least ask this board about. So, um, one of the things that, and I do understand, you know, that this board is, or the Board of Trustees is working on updating, you know, variations of the zoning code, that is in process. One thing about this home is we didn't notice that, you know, there are no identifiable, like, antiquity or uniqueness or setting for architectural construction, other than the fact that it is going to be a part of what would be an expanded historic district. Uh, so in exploring these alternatives, you know, we came before this board for a discussion, and, you know, it was noted that, you know, the expansion of the historic district has been adopted, you know, by the federal and state government, however, that local law hasn't quite caught up to that yet. So just for a point of clarity, assuming it will take some more time for that zoning code to update itself, am I correct in saying that the interpretation of this home outside of the existing historic district, you know, falls under different criteria under the existing zone? I, I just, you know, we're about 140 feet from where that existing boundary is, and we are outside of the current historic period of significance, understanding certainly that, you know, we will, that there are updates potentially coming to that. And, you know, we tried to touch on a little bit of that in the cover letter, but I was just, you know, wanted to ask, you know, that, that is the interpretation, this board is, is applying what would be future law to this application.
No, 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 under the current law, we, we, there were construction on, many constructions on Platte Avenue in the same situation, and we had to go over the demolition permit by one section of the code, but the other section of the code says we have the right to, to approve construction of historic buildings, which they are not and yet in the expanded bubble of the village. So you're in the same boat as the, the brick house on the corner, and the house across the bit, and the Polittai House, and all the other houses, that they wanted to knock it down, we had to approve that, we're the only hope we keep our fingers crossed that that building, and some of them are okay, they're good, putting in a nice design, and so you're in the same boat. So we, we could look at this, but in the current code today, we don't get to approve this. It looks really good, which is great, but we don't have to approve this. All we have to approve under the current code is the demolition permit. If the bubble's expanded, we had changed the code several years ago, when buildings were torn down, like the police station, like 37 South Street, or the, I forget the address on Livingston Street, that it was just happening, we had no control over it, so we changed the code, say, any new construction in the historic district, which you're not yet, we get to approve. Like, once they passed that law, the vacant lot on Mulberry Street across the street will have to be approved, the design of that building, not, you know, like the Black House on Platte Avenue, we have no, we don't pick colors anyway, but the giant picture windows and the way it was built is not something conforming with the historic district look. We had no say in that, because the bubble has not been approved to expand it yet.
I, I think, yeah, I, I'm glad, thank you for, for providing that information. I think it's good to just hear that, because that's something we certainly recognize when we came in for our informal discussion, is just the position this board's put in. You know, however, you know, life is moving on for my parents, so we're, you know, looking to obviously work with this board on all of those elements of, you know, site plan design through this process, understanding that that may not be what is currently, you know, in your purview for this application. So we certainly recognize...
People, the people on Platte Avenue did come and show us what they were going to do, if they demolished part of a building or whatever, and, and it looked good. People are, you know, sensitive, well, some people are sensitive, so to the way the building should look to fit in, even though, you know, it's fake, it's not, it looks like, you make it look like a village, a Ryanbeck building, which is very, the village is very eclectic, it's got a lot of different designs, no colonial, you know, federal, whatever, it's all a mixture, a hodgepodge of designs, just to make it look like it fits in, but of course, there are, the new building on 37 South Street is modern, and, and so is the building on Livingston Street, of course, the police station is too, and it's the, it's the best that people can do if you're going to demolish something, make it look like something. But there's been, you know, there, it's hard, there are debates, people walk around saying, oh, what a beautiful old building this is, and, okay, well, you know, you know...
I guess I just wanted this board to recognize that, you know, we're, we, we see that challenge for you, and we're willing to work with you along the way as best as possible.
And there's a philosophy that's gone on for many years between architects, it's split 50-50, that some great museums have added on a wing, and they say, we're gonna make it ju- just like the other wing, and then other architects say, that's terrible, we're gonna build a glass box as the wing, so you can say, this is the original historic building, and this one is the new wing, and it's like split in the architectural community, which is the right answer, and I don't think there is any.
Sure, I agree. And I think that's what kind of brought us here today before you, you know, with reference from the zoning enforcement officer, that this could potentially be an issue, with our, you know, meeting with you earlier for a discussion, these items certainly came to our attention. And, you know, so tonight, we're here seeking, you know, a certificate of removal and demolition.
That's right.
And, you know, we're pursuing that with the intention of redevelopment in the site, and it's hard to talk about one without talking about the other. So I think I'd just like to take a little time to talk about the other as well.
Understand is that you submitted this application, so the clock has started. We have to get a legal opinion, but probably, whatever they do later on, we would probably not have site plan approval, because the clock has started.
Yeah.
I don't know, we'd have to talk to our attorney, I'm not sure.
I'm not attorney, but the precedent is that until you get the building permit and the foundation of them, in the ground, the municipality can change the zoning, and you have to abide by it.
Okay. We have to, Emily Swenson said, she wrote to me, our attorney, and said, you have any questions, you know, ask. So whatever we decide with tonight, I can write to her and say, what is your interpretation of this? You know, I mean...
Understood, yeah.
Under, under current law, we only have control over the demolition permit, and then you could build whatever fits in the code.
And that is certainly...
But by the time you get through the process, you're gonna have to have a public hearing as well, more than likely, the, the, what's built in its place will, will come under our purview as well. That would be my guess, unless the public hearing, the law gets delayed for another six months.
I think it happens.
Which is, is possible.
It is, it is, it's been a long time.
I'm just trying to help establish that, you know, we're here to work with this board and, and understand the position that you're in, and would love your consideration on, on all of these things, knowing that things could change in the near term, or maybe not for a little while.
So the main thing is scheduling the public hearing for the demolition permit, and having a sufficient justification justified to the board and the public who, while you're tearing down a, you know, historic building, nobody might show up, a lot of people might show up and be upset that it's being torn down, and you need to be able to present that it's financial hardship is one of the categories, and it cost a fortune to try to adapt it, and it still wouldn't work to be, you know, which was a justification for 37... And it cost a fortune to try to adapt it, and it still wouldn't work to be, you know, which was a justification for 37 South Street and the police station. So you have to, you know, whatever's in the code, make, think about it, make a quick presentation that, that if the public, if you had a lot of members of the public concerned about it, you'd be able to convince the board that this is the right thing to do.
We had two examples of something like this on Oak Street where I live. 38 Oak Street was Pete Newton Simmons' house, modest, probably 1890-ish small house. He was a plumber's assistant, couldn't read or write, and they died. And owners that have the property now bought the house with the intention of fixing it up so their parents could live in it. And once they got inside and they saw what a house that was 100 plus years, that nothing had ever been done to it, was, they basically got a demolition permit, and they didn't come to us because it wasn't the historic district. And they put a lot of money in it, and it's absolutely beautiful. It helped the street, across the street, the red house, that was Scott Krunkchak bought Mary Wager's house at foreclosure. Another day, probably built in 1850s or 40s.
Earlier, yeah.
1840s or 50s, and, and that was so bad, he demolished it and...
He did not.
Yes, he did, that's a brand new house.
No, it is not.
Yes, it is. I live on this street.
If Scott, if Scott Krunkchak were here, he would tell you that was not a full demolition.
Yeah, I think that was...
I have his, I have his foundation stones in my backyard. When they were doing the historic district, who's the guy from the state there walked by? He goes, well, that's obviously old, it was all brand new, it's, it's poured concrete foundation, it's got blown-in insulation everywhere, high-tech wiring. He took some of what his house used to be and used that as the, as the stair.
He took the stairwell out of the house on South Street and reinstalled it on the...
Both of those houses...
We digress.
Both of those houses are an improvement to the, to the village.
But getting back to the concept of next steps in terms of requesting approval on a demolition certificate.
Public hearing.
Well, public hearings, so do you require a public hearing?
Just about to go there.
And you have mentioned in your opening, you, you discussed a good bit about the engineering study. And all of, for example, all of the things that would need to be done to the house. Lowering the house, foundation, all new electric, all new plumbing, all new windows, stairs, hallways that are compliant so someone older can move around. Making it sufficient to age in place. It's an enormous amount, and you did state that you, you thought that that would mean that the cost of renovating sufficiently to meet the needs of the occupants would exceed, if I heard you correctly, the cost of building a new house.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's an argument that you can propose. John had mentioned before, not the 64.4, but what is it, 65 point?
Just about to get to that, okay, if you would, if you'd...
So just to complete that, those are things that at the public hearing, make your presentation. These are the, these are the criteria that we must satisfy. These are why we think we satisfy those criteria and should be granted, you know.
Understood, and appreciated. No, no, I mean, so that brings us here before you to talk about a demolition permit. And as I mentioned, it's hard to ignore redevelopment without, with talking about demolition. So, you know, to, to John's point, you know, we are proposing to raise this existing 1.5-story home. And in order to do that, we need to meet the criteria of the section that was referenced. And it's noted in there that the removal or demolition must not result in a significant avoidable diminution of the historic character of the community. So after hearing feedback at the last meeting, understanding the code requirements, you know, we put a lot of time and effort into thinking about these things. So if you would, you know, just bear with me, I'd like to just take a look at the historic character of the community in the context of this one block on Mulberry Street. So I'd like to just take a quick walk down Mulberry Street. And if you go into your packet that says existing elevations, you get through the home, existing elevations, you'll see that we've also prepared an elevation and architectural study of North Mulberry Street. So I went, I went through the inventory on the state website, and I pulled photos of the inventory from there and as well as the classification and the type of homes that are on this one block of Mulberry Street. So we're gonna start at the south end, at the intersection of Chestnut Street. On most of these streets, you understand that some have addresses on Chestnut Street, and they also have frontage on Mulberry Street. So we are starting with a couple of Chestnut Street addresses on, that are on Mulberry Street. So, you know, 35 Chestnut Street, it's listed in the state's website as Modern Movement. Now, Modern Movement is, appears to be like almost anything that's not in another historical classification. So it was an odd, you know, classification to me. But that's what this one is listed as.
That's a Cape Cod.
Essentially, essentially, it appears that the, the style or the type is a Cape Cod. If we go to, and I provided the Mulberry view of that home so that you understand that it's on Chestnut Street, frontage, but has the Mulberry view. So moving just to the other side of the road, we were just on the west side, we're gonna go to the east side. That's 37 Chestnut Street, that's classified as a late Victorian, Queen Anne. We move, you know, continuing down the block here, we go to 36 Mulberry Street, you have another Modern Movement home. You know, 33 Mulberry Street, just across the road, another Modern Movement home. 38 Mulberry Street is actually a lot, and that is actually the garage for the Vicarie parcel. That's actually shown as a historic structure now on the state historic presentation office website. The demoed house, 37 Mulberry Street, which is no longer present, was listed as a late and 20th century revival. Continuing to 40 Mulberry Street, back on the west side, that's another Modern Movement home. Directly across the street, we have another late to early 20th century American movement. And then I snuck in our elevation of the proposed home for 42 Mulberry Street. The current home is listed as Modern Movement, Cape Cod. And, you know, we're proposing a late Victorian. And I just kind of wanted to sneak it in here, because directly across the street, 41 Mulberry Street, is also a late Victorian home. Continuing down the block, 44 Mulberry Street, Modern Movement. 43 Mulberry Street, which is set way back, it's an interesting lot. You know, there's actually no style listed for that home, they don't provide any architectural classification on the SHIPLA website. 45 Mulberry Street, late 19th, 20th century revival. Moving to 46 Mulberry Street, new construction. That is actually no architectural classification records. We go to 47 Mulberry Street.
I think that's early army barracks.
Early army barracks, yeah.
It, it does hearken back to when there were greenhouses on this whole section. I was trying to give you the benefit of the doubt. 47 Mulberry Street, late 19th, 20th century revival. 48 Mulberry Street, late Victorian. You know, 49 Mulberry Street, 19th, early 20th century American movement. 51 Mulberry Street, late Victorian, on that corner of Platt and Mulberry, Modern Movement. So what, what does that mean as we kind of just take a look at, at those numbers? So, you know, when we break this down, there are 19 homes on the street that, that I've inventoried. Seven are listed as Modern Movement, four is Late Victorian, two as Late 19th to Early 20th Century Modern Movement, two as Late 19th, Early Century Revival, and then three have no architectural classification. Just one other thing I wanted to note here is the stories. Because there are very two-story, one-story, three-quarter story, one and a half story homes in the village and on the street. But when you take a look at those, the existing site and 10 homes are listed as, or excuse me, 10 homes on the street are listed as two-story or greater. Eight are listed as one and three-quarter story or less. So when we just take a look at the, what is the historical character of this community, we see that it's varied. And in, in looking at that and, you know, listening to the feedback that we received from this board, we, you know, decided that we would go ahead and look at architecture that would fit into that late Victorian style. And that choice was made because trying to adapt a Modern Movement Cape Cod into something that has a viable two-story almost damages that architectural character. So a more appropriate, you know, architectural form for this site would be a, a Late Victorian, which tend to be two-story, especially in the village. And if we just kind of widen our, you know, analysis out a little bit through the village, you'll see that Late Victorian is certainly a strong historical characteristic and precedent, you know, in the period of significance.
This one street is an example of the entire village. The whole village looks like this, there are magnificent giant structures, there are next to small summer homes. There was no, you know, it wasn't Washington DC where they laid out a plan for it, it was just as it was built.
So in, in challenging ourselves to meet exactly, you know, that section of chapter 64, you know, does the removal or demolition, you know, significantly avoidable, you know, diminution of the character of the community, excuse me. You know, we would suggest that a proposal of a Victorian-style, late Victorian-era home in this location is a contributing factor to that, as opposed to a diminution. And I guess that's where I would just, you know, fall, number four, item number four of that section.
I think you could also, after I read, read this again, item three actually is, criteria three is actually also arguable, I think. You could say, after considering the interests of the public and the owner, the benefits of demolition of the building outweigh any reasonable interest in preserving the building. I think that's a, you could make the case there too.
I actually did. I have that also listed in our cover letter on page three, you can scroll up to that. You know, first of all, a public hearing is required for this application. So we are certainly going to understand what the public's input of, of this proposal is. You know, that, that will be known after, after that public hearing. We have a member of our community and a neighbor of ours here this evening to support us. We are also working with all of our neighbors to come support us for that public hearing.
It is the best thing that you can do. Brian's gonna say, it's, it's, what is it, a couple hundred feet, but that's a small block. You will be inviting the entire block to the public hearing.
Absolutely.
And it's best to knock on everybody's door and show this to all the neighbors. And then you have, you've done your homework, and you have people that are coming and saying, oh, why are you knocking down an old house? They will understand in advance why you're doing that. And coming in with neighbor's support by speaking to them before the public hearing is always beneficial to you.
We, we are working with that and getting written a support, and we'll be providing that before the public hearing.
Good.
And then to further, as you mentioned with number three, it also talks about the owner's interest. And as I've mentioned before, like 85% of the ownership and occupancy has been my father's family of this home. And similarly, you know, th- those people who have been in this community are the important factor in that. So bringing my parents back into this community is, is certainly, you know, something that will be beneficial over like a historic period, and, you know, should be considered as far as, you know, their, their wishes and their interest, you know, in, in redevelopment of this site. And so I did make an argument for three, but there was some discussion of whether that would be possible. And I, I have taken a look at it, and I did provide some detail in the, in the letter. But it was, you know, it's a, it's a bit tougher of, of reach there. But I, I think you're right, I do believe there is a case for that.
I would try to hit, hit both, because I think that talks about the interest of the owner and the family history in the village is so strong that, you know, I think that's a good argument.
I live in Frank Stickle's house, my house was built in 1810, and Frank bought in 1909 and built the Red Brick Garage. And Jen gave me the picture of the whole family, Jen, Frank, his wife, Ailey Stickle, Alfreda Stickle, you know, all three of them in the car together, right in front of the garage. It didn't go a little bit to the right, I could see what the house looked like then, in 1914, but I tried, I turned, and it won't move. It's not gonna be a good picture.
And I think, you know, we're, you were talking about a home from the 1810s. You know, one of the other things about this home in particular, under current law, it's not necessarily in the period of significance. It appears that that will be, you know, expanded, and it will be to 1945. So we're on the far end of that historical significance as well with 1940s. And I think there's some consideration for that.
I mean, if you read the National Register nomination for this, if you haven't, you should. It directly, it's one paragraph on each of the buildings, and your paragraph on this building says it's a Cape Cod, not some sort of Modern Movement, it says it's a Cape Cod. It points out the things that that reviewer thought were important, like the porch, like the...
The six over line windows?
Six, oh, yeah. And also, and this might work against you, is that he made the case that the houses on Upper Mulberry were part of the greenhouse period, the era there. Because there were a lot of greenhouses up there, and a lot of the workers built houses in that portion of the, of the village because they worked on the greenhouses right next door. And so he made the case that not only those houses are important because they're over 50 years old and intact, but also because they were part of the greenhouse era. And so the workers' houses on Mulberry Street and North Parstage, and the owner's houses, which were on the west end of Platt, were all significant because they were part of that era. So there may be some, I don't know, there may be some pushback that this is not necessarily architecturally superb, the existing house, but it is part of that era and so therefore should be preserved. You have to sort of be prepared to address that, I think.
Certainly. And I guess, you know, in looking at, you know, kind of just doing a bit of an inventory and going down the block and taking that walk, we've settled on a proposal for what we feel is some, you know, historically appropriate and contributing building mass. And, you know, we just want to briefly tell you what we're looking to do with that. You know, we're looking for some refined architecture with very similar door placement, because obviously we want to speak to that existing home, so all of the points of ingress and egress will be in similar locations. And we're also using the identical footprint, so we're not expanding this home in, in large portion. We're staying within that same intact footprint.
Yeah, you notice it when you look.
There's a little bit of the porch changing here and there, but for the most part, the majority of that home is, is in that same space. So it has the same presentation along the streetscape, or similar presentation along the streetscape.
I think the strong point is when you show the site plan, and you show the footprint of the houses to the north and the south, and they're exactly the same.
In the same line.
It sits within the scale of the neighborhood, it's higher than the neighbors, but it's not higher than the neighbors across the street. But it is the same scale, it's not like some, one of these sort of mansion-type houses that people want to build in which they're out of scale with the neighbors.
It's a tough lot, because those four lots have no backyard, and I don't know who did that and when that was done. But try to work with Joanne Gelb to put a bathroom back there and a hot tub, and it's like, it's like, there's no backyards in those four houses. It was cut off, and someone has a giant yard around the corner, and I don't know who did it.
And, you know, just some other benefits to the community. You know, we are looking to update, you know, some things that are not incorrect on the site plan, but if you could just go to sheet two, please, Jeff. The proposed site plan. You know, we would like to correct a few things. The biggest one is that, you know, the existing home is on an assess pool without a septic tank. We would like to provide a modern septic system utilizing that entire backyard, as you're suggesting, because it's necessary. And we would be updating the septic system to current standards. We have that application in front of the health department. You know, movement through this process is what's, you know, where we are in that, in that step. One of the other things that we would like to do is relocate the non-conforming driveway from the northeast corner of the home to the south portion of the home so that we can have vehicle access for two parked vehicles as described by the code, current code. So, you know, looking at a couple of things that we're, you know, are on the positive side of kind of site plan improvements. And, you know, some of the, you know, ultimately, now Jeff, if you could just open up the architecturals, please. And we could probably just skip right to, you know, the renderings, they're probably the easiest. Even if you just want to go through, you know, floor plans, we're not really concerned with on page two at this point. So these are the elevations, you know, the most important elevation in this perspective is number one. That's the front elevation that'll be facing Mulberry Street. And, you know, some of the... And, you know, some of the fenestrations that just wanted to point out here would be the proposed six-over-blank windows, which are consistent with both what was the existing home and the neighboring homes on either side, both have those style of windows. The, the front porch includes the low pitched hipped roof and the turned wooden columns, which is definitely speaking to the Victorian style. And then we have trim accents, so there will be trim accents along, you know, all of the variations of windows and trim sections, and then also through the middle of the building, and then on the upper gables, you know, we're proposing what would be more of a scalloped, you know, kind of shaker look to that as well. So, you know, we're looking at a lot of those things. And the roof lines and overall facade, then, are quite consistent with homes that are influenced by this period of significance, which is the late Victorian era. So if we could just go to the renderings now, these are actually, that's just precedents, so other homes kind of that have helped kind of inform this design, you know, were shown on that other page, might be useful for someone. But here are, you know, photorealistic renderings of how this home would fit in specifically in its immediate location, with its neighbors on either side. And utilizing the existing footprint, which is small, I believe it's sixty by forty? Sixty by, it creates the need to go up, and then what's helpful is that since we are looking to redo the foundation and lower the home, it helps soften that additional two-story. So, there is, you know, essentially our proposed architecture. And we've gone, I think, a step further than was necessary for a demolition permit, but we wanted to do that, and we want to work with this board on moving forward with this application. So, you know, we would just hope that the board is considering all of these, all of the information we're presenting. We understand that we have, or hopeful that we can schedule this evening a public hearing for the next available meeting. We'll be prepared to present to the public and the board that time. And then I guess I just open it up to any questions.
I think you're very well prepared for this. Brian, the first meeting in June?
June sixth.
June sixth, D-Day. So we have to do the same thing, declare lead agency and-
Probably not seeker chair, that was overstep.
Right, that's what I was thinking, too. Right, do you have a motion to declare lead agency?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
John Vee.
John Vee. Votes in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to, we're, schedule a public hearing for June sixth, you'll be ready, and Mike, ten notifications out. Do we need a motion to-
Yes, we do.
Okay, could I have a motion to set the public hearing for forty-two Mulberry Street demolition permit on June sixth?
I'll motion that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Michael, second, so votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I think you're in good shape, you know, refine yourself, and talk to the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Two-hundred feet, I think is the limit, two-hundred feet, it's many houses.
Two-hundred feet, yeah, all directions.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a lot of people, the whole block that you just outlined is probably gonna show up.
I believe we've spoken with most of them.
We've already spoken to them.
I would say, go to thirty-eight Oak Street, knock on their door and just ask their, you didn't have to go through us, but just the fact that they had planned to fix a house up, and what they had to do, and it became a demolition.
That's a very good idea, I'm certain to do that.
Yeah, I would say, thanks for this, Seth, your presentation is thoughtful, cogent, relevant.
I appreciate that.
I think it will be a great presentation.
Make a good case, and I have no idea what-
And the proposal, I think, is very sensitive, so I think if you do your homework with the neighbors-
It shouldn't be a problem, then we can start on, approve the demolition permit, we can start on the site plan.
If there's one thing I would say, if it was me, I wouldn't stress the Victorian aspect of it, because that block is, even though there's some houses that are consistent with what you're proposing, they're not really Victorian-era houses. That block is thirties and forties houses. And so you could do a thirties and forty Victorian, and like the one at thirty-seven, which is probably closest to what you're proposing. It's sort of a plain, you know, it's not an elaborate Victorian, it's not attempting to be a Victorian.
No.
It's a cross-gable, it's got a porch, it's, you know, it's got some Victorian-type detailing, but everything on that block is relatively plain, except for the arts and crafts house across the street, which is barrier indicative of that nineteen-twenty, thirties era. So to me, to try to transplant a Victorian house on that block is not consistent with the block, but some, doing a two-story house with sort of a Victorian theme, but not, just not make it look like a high-style Victorian.
Right.
Subtle.
Yeah, understood.
So it looks like it fits within the nineteen-thirties and forties block, because it's consistent with the house across the street, and it's consistent with the house on the corner, it's not, it is consistent with the house further up the block, which all are nineteen-thirties, forties houses, probably, or twenties at least, at the most, but aren't really highly detailed, high-style Victorians.
Understood. Very much appreciate your comments in our previous discussion. I hope that you can see that they have informed our proposal.
Yes.
And we look forward to seeing you in June.
I stick that.
If you guys could keep those, that'd be great, I thought if you had it at the next meeting.
We could look them over.
We do deal with so much paper, it's nice to focus something.
And we'll try to direct as much as possible, the question at the meeting is for the demolition, not what's being proposed to replace it. I understand you want to show that, so that you show that it's consistent and not a diminution of the neighborhood, but the comments should be really directed at the demolition question, rather than what's being done to replace it.
Understood.
I don't want them starting to pick apart, you know, I'd prefer if you had a dormer here or a window change there or something, we don't want to get into that.
Okay. Looked a terrible presentation, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Elijah.
How are you?
A good change, Seth. So I'll pick up the cinder block and put it in a brick chimney, that's how-
That's what I'm here to seek your approval on.
I'll sign it like that.
And we provided some samples, and I think it'll be an improvement, so.
House looks great.
Thanks.
And this is one suggestion we made-
That's right, you asked me to do that on June seventh, and I wasn't ready at that time, because we had so much work on our hands there.
Yeah, it's weird. Try it again.
So in any event, everything came out, nice soup-to-noise restoration, and this will basically complete the project.
Yeah.
And I provided some photos, so you could see that there. If you want some better copies, I-
No, that's, we can see that, yes.
And this is what you're proposing it might look like, except-
Well, that's big.
-attached to the building.
I would say, essentially, that's exactly how it'll look, minus that photo, that photo doesn't show a cap chimney. We plan on putting a bluestone cap over top of it.
Is it a functional chimney in any way?
It's for the furnace. Now, originally, we have photos of the street when it was a dirt road, and the house had a chimney in the center of it, but that's long gone, so.
Wow.
And this house was built at a time where there, I don't think there was a fireplace, but I could be wrong, it's really hard to say.
Is this, is this, what is this, a new series?
That will be removed, and we will, we'll go over that with sheathing and siding. So the chimney will be flush to that window in the gable line.
Salvage aged brick with a bluestone cap.
You know, we were fortunate, because we have three buildings that were recently demolished in New York City, and they're Greek Revival-style buildings, and they were in very bad shape. And we have brick that we saved during the demolition process, so we'll be using portions of that. We're also using that on South Street, on the fourteen South Street project, so.
That's coming along, we have a lot of crew down.
A lot of work, he's doing a bang-up job, and we hope to have that done in about six, seven months, still quite a ways out.
Dine out by water, one of my favorite things.
What's that?
Dining out by water.
That's it, that's it.
It's one of my favorite things.
Yeah, I say that there's a whole bunch of stuff here that you say is not relevant, but you're saying you're requesting a waiver? What type of waiver are you requesting here?
I was told by my attorney that, being that this is such a small project with low impact, that I would be entitled to a waiver of all of the, providing all of that documentation.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So it's just a waiver of providing everything on the site plan.
All right.
So that looks, that looks very good to me, better than cinder block.
Yeah, I think so. As I say, it'll be an improvement on it, and it's not this modern, veneered-style brick or anything.
Anybody have any questions about it?
No.
I don't, Todd?
Is this, is this a rendition available?
No, this is the finished product, this is a photo of it.
This, so this is the chimney?
No, that's the existing chimney.
This is the block chimney?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be replaced with a salvaged brick with a bluestone cap?
With a bluestone cap on it, that's correct.
So it's got a red tinge, because I think it was taken at sunset.
Right, right, that's a darker picture. But if you scroll down, you might find some better ones.
Well, you put some nice copper leaders and gutters on there, I see.
Yeah, we got an agreeable price on them, and it worked out.
Uh-huh.
I'll make the post for the horse and carriage. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for making this change.
I appreciate it. On another matter, we fixed the sidewalk in front of the telephone building.
Oh, really?
And I really didn't know how to proceed with that. We put some stone and we leveled it off some, so that it wasn't such a trip hazard, I don't know if there's any input. I wanted to see how the stone would work, because I didn't want to put blacktop there.
No, no, I had suggested putting in dirt and like myrtle or some sort of ground cover-
Right.
-so that it was more greengreen.
We could always do that, we could always put topsoil on that.
Yeah, I'll think about it. You know, I don't like the stone, I think it's awkward to walk on, it's not attractive. I always think that the planning strips should either have planning in it, or it should be some sort of, you know, pavement or brick or some sort of-
It was such a steep grade that we were constrained by that.
Yeah, exactly.
It's really high, very high there.
Yeah.
And we also didn't want to get involved with the TOT and everything, for obvious reasons.
Right, yeah.
So we did our best to make it as smooth as possible.
We finished in the year twenty-nine-hundred, at that rate, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a big improvement, but-
Well, if it doesn't work out, we'll-
Yeah, if it starts settling.
We'll look at another solution. Well, thank you.
Thank you for that, that's a great idea.
See you.
So we have minutes, it's a lot of-
Next item is the-
Summer meetings.
Summer meetings.
Oh, so the meetings would be July, August second.
Oh, okay.
You have to reverse here, so we're not meeting on July fourth, obviously, we're not meeting on August fifteenth, we are meeting on August two. I'll have to change my calendar. So we're meeting both meetings in June and July eighteenth, I guess, and then two weeks later, we're not meeting, why are we not meeting August fifteenth? I'm not here.
Oh. Because Mike wasn't gonna be here, and we weren't sure if anyone else was not gonna be here.
Yeah, I might be gone, that part of the, I'm gone somewhere in the late August, but I'm not sure exactly what week it is.
All right, and so then we'll have a whole month gap before the next meeting.
So we're meeting August first and July eighteenth?
Yes.
August one? All right, I'll change my calendar. I assume it was-
There'll be a reminder at the June meeting, so we're not gonna leave you guys totally out on that.
Okay, so the minutes are-
No, I need a, I need a motion, Chair.
Oh, you need a motion, okay. I'll make the motion to have our summer schedule as we're meeting on July eighteenth and August one.
Second.
And we're canceling the meetings on July fourth, obviously, and August fifteenth.
Okay. Jeff, second to it?
Votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now the minutes, I think we have three ready to be approved, February twenty-first, July seventh, and April fourteenth.
February twenty-first, here's the one that's combined John's comments, Darren's comments, and my comments.
Is that what we can approve? As amended.
Does any, if you looked at these and have any other thing, the stuff I put in blue here, the red is, I think Darren's, we had already incorporated John's from the prior meeting.
And we have a black version?
Well, what I'll do is like the last meeting, if we approve this, I'll put a clean copy, noted as approved, with approval date at the top.
What was the date on this one again?
February twenty-one.
February twenty-one.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-one as amended?
Can I make that motion?
You have a second.
I'll second.
Votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cross that one off the list.
Next one is March-
March seventh.
Seventh.
And that seems to be clean.
Yeah, and I had added some items here, and you may have seen the email from Darren, he was okay with all of them, too.
Right. So are we ready to go with March seventh as amended?
Go down to the end of the thing. I have some strange note here of mine.
Which section, John?
This is March seventh, right?
Yeah, yes.
Um, no, I guess not. Go up a little bit. I, oh, it says here in my notes, ID ZBA letter, so that's down further.
Well, that's the, that's the end of them.
It says, yeah, it's good though, sorry. I think I took that, I put that note down before these changes were made, didn't have enough detail, I thought.
Okay.
So I think it's fine.
Can I have a motion to approve March seventh as amended?
Will I make that motion?
Second.
Votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is April fourth.
I guess April fourth. Darren's good with these.
Uh, yeah, and then this stuff in red is just the stuff that I, remember, this was the pistachio business, and I just listed from one to six the conditions that were agreed to, that they came back with later on and confirmed, right? Dealing with the water runoff, the rooftop on the pool shading area won't have access, and nobody's going up there, the sound line is designated by the Village Code will be observed, and the homeowner will be required to remediate if the code is violated. Rendition, they showed us a rendition of the sightline appearance of the proposed pavilion from the Platte Ave neighbors, and they confirmed, and this was something you brought up, John, the mature height would be six to eight feet. Originally, they were looking for tall items, but the neighbor Judith Schneider said she didn't want the sunset view to be part of it.
Right, I remember that.
Right, and John, you asked, and they confirmed that the proposed fences will be of cedar, and in fact, they put that in the, they put that onto the site plan document.
So this is-
Then here's Lydia, confirmed the footprint will remain the same, except the rear floor will be pulled back to allow a balcony across, the skylight will be included on the southern face, the exterior chimney will be removed, fire, pipe will come up. This blue comment is from Darren, visibility of the pipe suggests they consider powder coating it to match the thing, and John, you suggested putting the skylight on the north side instead of the south side, and they said they would consider it.
Okay.
And the last item was that, oh yeah, the HVAC mini-split for Boran Steve. You reviewed the proposal with a neighbor, they were supposed to write a letter, he didn't get one. And John, you suggested putting the skylight on the north side instead of the south side, and they said they would consider it.
Okay.
And the last item was that, oh, yeah, the HVAC mini-split for Borstein. You reviewed the proposal with the neighbor. They were supposed to write a letter. He didn't get one. John noted the preference that the original weaving glass would be maintained, but it was just a suggestion. The blue stuff is Darren correcting, making sure it said six-over-six wall dividing lights. And then we got into the other business. Sal Antenna, discussion continued. Her rooftop structure doesn't appear to be the one that was installed in the original. And the original had a shielding cornice at the top of the structure. Ryan said he would do more searching and in fact, came back in the subsequent meeting with documentation. Was the meeting after this. Terrific Restaurant, Ryan said, you know, they're not completely done. What do you want to do? And we said, well, we want them to comply with all the conditions. And again, they came to us to the subsequent meeting. But those, that's what we said in this meeting. So that's the April 4th.
So Miranda, are you studying all the red and the blue that, to try to get an understanding of what, what the minute should contain?
Yeah.
Of the additions and stuff? So, you know, it's a learning curve for you to get to understand that it's not twelve pages, but it's not two pages. It's like four or five.
It's a summary.
And summary, summarize everything. The important points are in there, so we understand what we said we wanted them to do. Good, because that's what we're doing this for.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 4th minutes.
I'll second that.
Those in favor? As amended?
As amended, yes.
So we're not ready with anything else yet?
I didn't get to any of the others, but I will for the next time. But we approved six in the last two meetings, so...
That's good. And he mentions he doesn't remember November 1 or December 6th. Is that true?
That's Darren's email?
Yeah. I do not believe we've seen November 1 and December 6th.
Do you remember that email? What was the answer?
It was from Friday. That was it. That's part of Darren's list that still hasn't become, hasn't...
So Ryan, can you make up a, a new list of pending, pending minutes that we haven't approved yet?
Sure, yeah, I can grab what Darren...
That'd be great.
What Darren has brought up and then what, what's going on right now.
Excellent, so we'll understand. Anything else?
No, on the May 5th. I asked that the heat ducts mini-splits be screened on the north side. I thought that was a condition, but the first version, I said it wasn't in there.
For the Borstein?
No, no, no.
No, Terrific, May 2nd, actually.
May 2nd.
Oh, okay.
We haven't seen, I know Miranda has her first draft out for May 2nd.
Right.
But that, I don't think Darren has a chance to look at that, and I don't think...
I didn't really get into a lot of it, but it was like, you know, it wasn't on the site plan at all. And I said we have to have it on the site plan. It really needs to be screened. And I suggested extending the fence to the west, but, you know, plantings or something. But then I looked at it the other day, and it's like the piping that, that comes in is like cream or white on a dark green building. So maybe that should be, kind of suggested that...
Fifty girls walked by fifty-five South Street. They put a fence up in front of one of the mini splits.
I was away for two weeks.
So the most visible one.
Went to North Carolina.
The ones by the driveway have plants in front of them, but the one on the other side of the house, which is...
Spindly, spindly, sickly-looking there. Is that what happened?
Well, for the summer, they'll work, but I'm not sure about the winter. But they put an actual fence around the one on the, on the west side of the house. That's new.
Eight mini splits was the craziest thing anyone's ever done. That was wild.
I put six on my house.
Is that right?
Because the guy, guy explained, he says, you can get one, one big giant one for each floor, maybe even your whole house depending on it. And he says, but if something goes wrong, you've got no heater cold for the whole thing. He says, if you do zones and something goes wrong, you know, you're, you're not...
And they do a big unit and have some sort of zone switches on it? I guess it would still go off, and then you would, you would lose the whole house.
Yeah.
Or do that now.
But I put three of them underneath that deck. It's modest, and you can't see them.
So that's an argument against multiple interior units.
No generator, is that...
Does that handle multiple interior minis?
He, he said they run into problems, and he says, you know, they're made overseas. And if you need a part, you've got supply chain issues. And it's like, if you're in the winter and all of a sudden you want heat from these things, and they're not working, you're sitting in a cold house. So he says if you have, you know, lots of them, you know, for the zones...
How much space between them did you allow for ventilation?
I got about a fourteen-by-eighteen deck, and there's three of them under there.
Yeah.
You know, there's one here, then there's about that much space between the next one.
I was up in Bar Harbor last week. We stated it being big. All the interior AC is through mini splits. They have those little vertical units. They have four of them in a row, and there couldn't have been more than this much between them.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that's good for the efficiency of these things. I also took John some pictures of a street where, on the main street in Bar Harbor, on the corner, they brought the curb around wide, put the trees outside the sidewalk. In other words, there's a sidewalk. They extended the curb out into the street, put the trees out there, and then curved it back in for lined parking.
London was telling me that, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll send them to her. I'll send them to hers. You can send them, whatever. Send you those photos. It looked pretty good.
Because I proposed trees in the street on East Marcus Street. Set it on the sidewalks so that they, as they slowly die out on the sidewalk side, you can put them in the street, and they would make the sidewalks twelve feet wide without tree wells. I mean, it wouldn't be underneath the wires. They'd be in front of the wires.
What else?
Any else?
No.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Enjoy Memorial Day. Get ready for the parade. And see you nice heads.